So we're going to go ahead and get started. And so we'll start off with the school committee. Each candidate is going to have four minutes. We're going to start with, I did a randomizer for our order. So the, you know, mathematic mathematically randomized. So it's going to be Sarah and then Carolyn and then Jesse. And we've asked each of them to introduce themselves and we have one question that they have seen ahead of time. And the question is, Brooklyn residents have just had a 10% property tax increase and more overrides are likely on the way. These costs borne by homeowners directly or passed on as rent hikes disproportionately impact older adults living on largely fixed budgets. The school, the current school budget represents a higher percentage of the town's total budget than all of the other departments put together. So how will you balance Brookline's efforts to maintain high quality schools with a community that is affordable and provides excellent services in other areas? And does not rely on repeated overrides. So Sarah and then Carolyn and Jesse.
So hello, I'm Sarah Mogtatter and I'm running for school committee. I'm so pleased that we're having this forum today. Is this on? Okay. So what I was saying before is I am Sarah Mogtatter and I'm running for school committee. I'm going to begin by telling you a bit about who I am and then I'll go in to answer the question. So last November, I was brought into the school committee for a vacancy. And so I've been serving on it. My experience goes back to being a school teacher here in Brookline since 2004. I've taught in four of our different schools at the Hayes School, Ridley, as well as Runcle and Lawrence. I was a middle school teacher. That experience has given me a knowledge of our system, which has served me well on the school committee. I, I know what's possible. I know how to improve upon a system and I know the issues in education. I have a master's in education as well. So the other thing that being in our schools has given me is a knowledge of the system. I have, sorry, it has given me relationships to teachers there. When I go on school visits, I know the people that are in the schools. And in the central office, there's people who have seen me in my classroom. They know what I think of students and how I relate to them. As well as teaching, I've also written curriculum at the state level. I've presented here in the area as well as nationally. And I have been involved in Brookline on different programming committees. So the thing that brings together the way that I approach education is something that I share with a lot of you. It's that every student that walks in our door in the Brookline schools is our kid. So I want to tell you how, if I were elected, how that would play out for me. I want to prioritize our budget for teachers in classrooms, subjects, academic subject teachers at the high school. My second point is that I always look to the research for instruction. That's come out most recently in literacy, that we look at the science of how to teach reading as our way to inform our practices. And my third issue is we've talked a lot about intolerance this year. And so I really commit to you that every decision that I make on school committee, I'm always thinking about ways to make each and every student feel as if they belong. So I hope that on May 7th, you'll vote for Sarah Mogtatter. And my slogan for that is teach every kid. Today I wanted to answer the question that was asked of us. As you all know, the town school split was established long ago and it's not the purview of the school committee. But as we know, the school gets 60% of the town's budget to work with. And in the last cycle, I was there for the budget cycle. We met the number that we were asked to do. I was committed to matching our budget to the amount we were allotted to spend. And that's the part that's under the purview of the school committee. I've referred to that process and you can come to speak to me personally to let me know if you want to know more about the budget process. I think the spirit of this question was to ask if I would ask for more funds if the things that we wanted to do for the school committee weren't possible. And I understand that we have to give a little bit to get what we'd like to do. Lexington comes up frequently when we're talking about schools as a comparative community, but happens to be where my 80 year old parents are. And they've decided to age in place. And so through doing, I'm an only child. And so through looking at what they need from our community or my old community in Lexington. I've figured out that there's other, as much as education is important to them, there's other pieces of the community that are more important right now. The library, the programming and the community center, as well as the sidewalks to walk around town. And so looking at that, that has really taught me that what we need to do is we needed to look at the overall resources of the town and how they impact everybody at every age.
Thank you, Sarah. And just Carolyn, before you go, just I would like to mention that we're voting for three school committee candidates out of four. Take it away, Carolyn.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm going to try and do this without holding the microphone, so excuse my posture. Thank you so much for having us here. I'm Carolyn Thall. I'm going to spend my four minutes answering the questions. So please visit my website or contact me directly to learn more about me personally and my views on other issues. I am very glad to be asked this question. How do we balance excellence and affordability and public support? Because this complex and essential question and my capacity to dig into it is a main driving reason why I'm running for school committee. I am uniquely qualified on this issue. I'm coming in with a track record of being willing to have, often initiating, the conversations that we have to have if we want our schools and town, they are one, to thrive. I am known for being a clear, critical thinker and for asking good, tough questions. And I intend to bring those skills to the school committee table. I have been a public school parent here for 13 years and counting. I'm fully committed to our public school system. And I have deep experience on the town side of government. I'm a three term town meeting member and I've been on the advisory committee, on the school's subcommittee. The job there is to analyze the school department budget and I have questions. Public schools must focus their limited resources on academics. I want money spent on our schools, on student facing teaching and learning. Other choices and peripheral initiatives have to be examined and discussed thoroughly and in public. This has not been happening to a sufficient degree. I'm not afraid to call out overspending on non-essentials or imbalanced priorities when I see them. I'm not afraid because I love our schools and I know we have to be clear and careful about what we're doing and what we're asking of voters. Because anything else will not be sustainable. I have been outspoken about the fact that the path we're on is not sustainable. This includes our approach to school building projects. We are asking the public to fund expensive, enormous buildings that will be costly to maintain. This while we're cutting academic programs, laying off teachers, and while this senior center can't even get painted. That is not balanced and it's not right. Last year, a warrant article was proposed to town meeting calling for an outside analysis of the school department's approach to budgeting. I am the only school committee candidate who voted for that article. I supported that idea because I support our schools and I support our roads, parks, first responders and our seniors. And I need to be convinced that we're being smart enough in our approach to all of this. We can have high quality schools and town side services. We do have to make tough choices and they have to be the right choices. We can't make the right choices without the right or enough information. We need people at the table who are willing to ask for that information and examine it intellectually and honestly. That's me. And it doesn't mean I don't love our schools. On the contrary, it's because I support our schools and our whole town. School committee is a townwide office and I want our town to thrive. Thank you.
Hold, hold the applause, please. And Jesse.
Hi. Can you hear me? Schools are magical places. They are the spaces where we grow, our minds are enriched and our perspectives about ourselves and the world around us are deepened and broadened. I'm running for the school committee because I want to ensure that every single student, regardless of their background, abilities or circumstances, has equitable access to an excellent education. The education we provide must be rooted in a school culture that encourages learning, kindness, empathy, compassion and accountability. But above all, it must be a culture of respect and dignity for all members of the school community, including students, teachers, administration and parents and caregivers. I will engage with stakeholders on issues including curriculum, academic rigor, literacy, special education, and of course, the budget. I've been committed to education for over 40 years, both within the corporate and community spheres. In retirement, I remain active in community facing nonprofit boards. I became a town meeting member in 2022 and I'm also a member of the pedestrian advisory committee. My wife Brenda and I raised our children here in Brookline and are active grandparents, including two grandchildren at the Roland Hayes School. Allow me to highlight three of my goals as a future school committee member. Educational excellence, every student receives what they need to succeed. Hate speech, we need to implement a framework for addressing hate speech incorporating prevention planning. Stabilities of this school committee are to evaluate the school superintendent, review and approve budgets for, for public education and establish educational goals and policies for the schools. One approach that the town via the select board has taken in recent years to address fiscal challenges is the establishment of a Brookline Fiscal Advisory Committee. This committee has the following charge, review and evaluate Brookline's fiscal and financial projections looking forward. Examine town and school budget principles and financial policies and suggest actions that address misalignment between projected revenues and expenditures. The volunteer members of that committee have significant experience in finance, accounting, budgeting, financial controls, economics, economic development, land use planning, purchasing and strategic planning. The committee recommended that the select board, the school committee and the advisory committee adopt a financial and budgeting, a budget, a financial and budget process requiring periodic summits among the select board, school committee and advisory. A key observation was that Brookline's annual expenses are projected to grow faster than its annual revenues, resulting in a steadily deepening structural deficit that the town administration has projected to reach $33 million by fiscal year 2027. There are different initiatives currently underway in town to explore ways of increasing revenue through economic development. Departments, including the public schools, must think about implementing procedures to efficiently manage costs still while optimizing student outcomes. Further, making the town's budgeting process more coherent, comprehensive and transparent will assist everyone in understanding the pressures on the fiscal side. However, all departments in town, quote from Charles Carey, require careful financial management and prudence in order to expand operations where the community seeks to do so, while still meeting our sizable and growing obligations. So in conclusion, in my hopefully future capacity as a school committee member, I will bring my experience in planning, budgeting and managing curriculum to the school's portion of this enormous challenge. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much to all three of you and we can have that applause now. We wish we had more time to ask you more questions, but that is it. So thank you so much. And next we're going to hear from Neil Woschinski, who is running to be town moderator. He is running unopposed. And Neil, do you want to be up here? So we're going to hear from Neil for four minutes. We, we, we're going to have questions for the select board members from the audience later. Unfortunately, it's tough trade offs with time, but we're not going to have audience questions for the school committee. Hey, look, I, I, I hear it. There's always tough trade offs. There's whole categories of candidates we're not even hearing from at all, and it's a huge bummer.
Howdy, I'm Neil Woschinski and I'm running for moderator. And moderator is probably a position you either have never heard of, or if you have heard of it, you haven't quite thought about it in a while. Because prior to three years ago, we've had a lot of stability in the moderator position where we had an incumbent moderator for really 27 years. And I, the, the, the one pledge I've been making is for this, for me, this won't be a 27 year gig. But the moderator presides over town meeting. And, and most importantly, with respect to town meeting, the moderator sets a tone. And my tone is going to be fairness and balance. And to me, that's the most important part of moderating town meeting, making sure the time limits are adhered to. That all aspects of a debate are adequately aired. And that's, that's what I hope to do. Another, another piece of the moderator's job is appointing folks to various committees. Most important committee, the moderator appoints folks to is the advisory committee, which is the town's finance committee. You heard Carolyn Thall, candidate for school committee, refer to the advisory committee. The advisory committee, as I said, is the town's finance committee and formulates the town's budget. And also has hearings with respect to warrant articles and, 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 and does analysis and makes recommendations. It's my hope that I will bring balance to the advisory committee and there too, set a tone of civility. And airing of all the, of all appropriate viewpoints and, and making sure that all aspects of the town's political structure feel that they've been heard. So that's kind of the, 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 the central core of what I hope to achieve. And I hope I'll have your vote. But I guess being that I'm unopposed, it's pretty certain I'll be moderating town meeting. So I thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Yeah, we're not going to have questions for anyone but select board. There, this is not a time to give a statement. So we're going to have the town clerk next, who's also running unopposed. This, it's, it's not an open opportunity to make statements. So Ben Kaufman, who's the current town clerk, also running unopposed is here. And so he is going to talk to us a little bit about that.
Thank you very much, Michael.
There will be audience questions for the select board members later. Yeah, I, I, I hear you. Yep, thank you for your, your comment. And yep, thank you very much. And if you want to keep talking, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. So you can either stop talking or you can leave. So it's up to you. Take it away, Ben.
Thank you, Michael. Hi, buddy, I'm Ben Kaufman. I am the current town clerk. I will be on the ballot this upcoming election. But what I'm really here to do today is to make sure folks know how to participate in our election that we have coming up. The options that you have to make sure that your voice is heard in our election. Brookline's elections are more accessible today than they've ever been in the history of our town through a variety of different reasons. We've dramatically expanded opportunities for voting by mail, for voting early, as well as voting on election day. So if you're interested in casting your ballot by mail, every Brookline voter is eligible. You received a postcard in January that you could check off if you wanted every ballot for 2024. If you check that off, then you're already on our list. We are actually mailing ballots out as we speak and we're going to send 9,000 by the end of the week. So if you filled that postcard out, keep an eye on your mailbox, you'll be getting those ballots soon. If you have not requested a mailed ballot and would like one, we have applications in the back. You can fill that out. The deadline is April 30th to get that into my office so we can send you a mailed ballot. If you're voting by mail, you can mail it back in. Every ballot comes with a prepaid envelope, so you don't even have to deal with the postage. You can also come and drop it off at town hall or use one of our ballot drop boxes. They are installed in front of the Coolidge Corner Library, in front of the Putterham Library and in front of town hall. And if you put it in there, it cuts out the post office. You don't have to be worried about any kind of delay. It's emptied by me and my staff. Actually, on my way over here, I was unlocking the Coolidge Corner box so people could use it. And that will make sure your ballot gets to us. If you're interested in voting in person, but maybe are busy on election day, I know it's a Tuesday, it's a busy day. Folks have stuff going on. You can actually vote early. We're doing early voting, starting on April 27th and running until May 3rd. And we're doing that at three different locations. We're continuing to expand early voting beyond just town hall. So early voting will occur every day from the 27th through the 3rd at town hall. But it will also be occurring on both Saturday and Sunday, the 27th and the 28th of April, at both the Coolidge Corner Library and the Putterham Library. So if you live in Coolidge Corner, if you live down in South Brookline, don't want to come all the way up to town hall, you can go to those libraries over the weekend. And we can get you, get you your ballot and have you vote right then and there and make sure your ballot is counted. And of course, on election day itself, you can go to your polling place. We have about 150 poll workers who will be sitting there from 7:00 AM when the polls open until 8:00 PM when the polls close, to make sure every single person gets a chance to cast their vote. So whether you're planning on voting early, if you're planning on voting by mail, if you're planning on voting on election day, please make sure you have a plan to get out and vote. It's an incredibly important election. We have offices up and down the ballot from select board to town meeting, including for town clerk. I hope that you will consider voting for me as well. And I hope to also see everybody out there on election day. The other thing that I'll mention, while this is really focused on town elections, I do want to make sure people know that for the rest of 2024, it's a very, very busy election year. Besides May 7th, we also will have the state primary election on September 3rd, as well as the presidential election on November 5th. So if you have filled out a vote by mail application and say you want them for all of 2024, we will send you a ballot for every single election. But make sure you have those days marked on your calendar. Make sure that you have a plan and make sure that you guys get out and vote. It's our chance to be heard in our democracy and I know we're all listening. So thank you guys very much. Thank you for being here and I hope to see you all on May 7th. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Ben. And if the select board candidates could come up.
That is an excellent question. A little intimidated when I said I'm unopposed and the answer is, is there a write-in option? There absolutely are write-in options for every race, including if you have a race where you have multiple choices, you can write in multiple names. So for select board, you could write in two different names if you wanted to. So you will have those write-in options on the ballot as well.
Thank you. And so we have four out of five select board candidates here. Sana Hafiz had hoped to be here, but had an emergency come up, so she is not here. And so thank you to the four candidates who are here. And so let's talk a little bit about how we're going to do this. We're going to get an introduction from each of the candidates, three minutes each. Thank you again to Matt Weiss for keeping the time. And then we have a variety of questions. So we have four questions that Brookline CAN and the League of Women Voters created ahead of time. So we'll be asking those four questions and then we're going to be opening it up to audience questions. And I also had publicly solicited questions ahead of time. So I have some online submissions for questions for folks who can't be here. So we'll take one from the audience. We'll have one from those folks. We'll take one from the audience. We'll have one from those folks until we run out of time. Minute 30 per answer, so we can move through as much as we can. You know, again, as always, there's trade offs with these things. We want to cover as much ground as possible. And then we'll have some two minute closing statements at the end, just a chance to wrap up. So again, I threw the names in a random order generator. And so what we'll do is we will start with that order and then we'll rotate. So if you go first on the first one, you'll be last on the next one. It's like A, B, C, D, B, C, D, A, so on and so forth. And so the order will be Susan, David, Alec and Bernard. And I'll prompt you as we go. So kick us off, Susan.
Thank you so much. I'd like to first thank you, thank you, Beacon and League of Women Voters for hosting this today and for all of you who came out. And also for the viewers at home who are watching, thank you. It's an honor to be here and just to talk about ourselves a little bit. So my name is Susan Park and I'm running for select board. I'm, I've been a town meeting member in my second term. I'm the Town Meeting Member Association Vice President in my second year. And I'm excited to run for select board and be that representation come May 3rd. I have a wealth of experiences, serving on many different committees and boards, leading a very successful ballot referendum last May that passed in all 17 precincts. That happened because I built consensus and I look at things with common sense and I know what the people of Brookline want. And, and that is one of my strengths in my wheelhouse, connecting, really listening and understanding. And I'm not going to pretend to know everything, but what I can do and what I've done over and over, and I have a strong record to show that, is to meet with people and to really try to understand what is needed. So the things that I will do if I'm elected. I realized that there will be a loss of $600,000 in ARPA money. And with Ruth Ann leaving, it is really important to find her replacement. I know the community here will miss Ruth very much. And in the short time I got to meet her, I'm going to miss her too. She's an amazing woman. And I realized that a lot of the funding for the senior center were through grants. So it's really important that we fill those gaps. It's really important to continue what has been built by Ruth Ann and this wonderful community all these years. I also know that transportation to the senior center is super important and parking for those who drive here is important. There's limited parking. Every boarding commission will affect seniors, especially mobile seniors. And I want seniors' voices to be seen and heard and I want all of you to be seen and heard. That is a priority. We need to consider the effects of all the policies on the entire population of Brookline, including seniors. And I support this concept. And if I'm elected, I believe that seniors should be considered as we modify different policies for, for seniors, pedestrians, everyone in between. Seniors in North Brookline and South Brookline, it all matters. We need to work together. We need to hear from everyone. I also support really hearing from all of you so that I can understand your needs besides the ones that I'm expressing right now. I hope to encourage good programming through the rec department because I know you guys have awesome programming. And last week's senior appreciation lunch, coming here and celebrating you all and celebrating all the volunteers. It was just beautiful to see and I want to continue to help you thrive.
Thank you, Sue. David.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm glad to be here. David Pearlman, I'm running for select board. Brookline courses through my veins. I've been living in this town since 1986 when I was four years old. I attended the peer school for transition to kindergarten, as it was called back then, Lincoln School for Kindergarten and First, and what was then called the devotion school from second grade through eighth grade. I stayed here for Brookline High School, graduating in 2000, stayed locally for college, attending Brandeis, and then I went to law school at Boston University. Professionally, I'm a child welfare attorney. I specialize in abuse and neglect cases and I also help families try to reunify with their children by working with them in issues around housing instability, substance misuse, mental health, domestic violence and public education. Both in my professional capacity, as well as based off of the outstanding experiences I had growing up in this community, I've always had a thirst for public service. And so in 2013, I ran successfully for town meeting and I've been serving in town meeting for over 10 years. In 2018, I ran for school committee successfully. In 2021, I was reelected to school committee. And for the last two years, I've been serving as chair of the school committee. In that capacity, I've had the opportunity to help oversee what is our largest municipal department. We have 7,000 students, over 1,000 employees. We engage in collective bargaining and we've had multiple successful and timely negotiations with the Brookline Educators Union and all. and also with AFSMI. These are very important leadership experiences that I've had that I would like to bring over to the Select Board side. So, what would be one of my priorities on the Select Board? Affordability. We say as a community that we value diversity and that we value having our seniors age in place, and yet, we continue to overly rely on residential tax dollars in order to fund the level of town and school services that we've grown accustomed to and deserve. And we need to find other ways to generate revenue. If we truly value diversity, we cannot continue to price people out and make it difficult for those to live in this community. I am very excited by opportunities that are along the Route 9 corridors, specifically in Chestnut Hill for potential commercial growth. That would be a major focus area of mine. Also, housing affordability and tax relief, including for seniors. I'm very interested in the Sudbury model. Many of you may be familiar with a Home Rule petition out of Sudbury that provides senior tax relief for low and moderate income seniors when their property taxes exceed 10% of the income that they are taking in. And I think that is something that we ought to be exploring in Brookline. I look forward to answering your questions. My time is up. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Alec?
Thank you, Michael. Good afternoon, everyone. Nice to be with you here tonight and nice to see so many familiar faces out in the crowd. My name is Alec Levovitz. I'm a Town Meeting Member representing Coolidge Corner, and I'm running for Select Board because I love this town. It's been my adoptive home for the last eight years, ever since I relocated to Greater Boston. We have so much to celebrate about Brookline, including the vibrant civic life that we're all participating in this evening. But we face serious challenges as well. Our community is increasingly unaffordable. Our municipal finances are strained. We're grappling with a region-wide housing crisis, and too often, we fail to live up to our community values of inclusion and equity. But despite the challenges, I have a lot of hope and a lot of optimism for Brookline's future. When we have leadership that brings people together, that listens to and respects a diversity of opinions, that is data-driven and compassionate, this community can accomplish great things. These are the principles that have guided me during my time as a Town Meeting Member, and this is the kind of leadership I'd like to bring to the Brookline Select Board. Public policy has been my life's passion. In my career, I'm a policy analyst specializing in state and federal Medicaid policy, the safety net of our healthcare system. In various roles in the public, private, and nonprofit sectors, I've seen firsthand the impact that public policy can have in people's lives, saving them from bankruptcy or even saving lives in many cases. As an advocate, a policy professional, and as a researcher, I've spent my life exploring how effective policies are created and implemented, and most importantly, how to win support for those policies. I believe I've proven this through my work in Town Meeting. In the past two years, I've led the passage of eight Warren articles, including five new local bylaws. Along with my many cosponsors and partners, I've reduced municipal operating costs. I've made our local government more transparent and more accessible, and I promoted solutions to the housing crisis facing our community. I helped to strengthen Brookline's rodent control efforts after the pandemic by increasing penalties on repeat violators of our refuse bylaws. I worked with coalitions to put in place the strongest possible local protections for reproductive rights and for gender-affirming care here in Brookline. And recently, I initiated and led an independent review of our Payment in Lieu of Taxes or pilot program, which has the potential, we've put forward a recommendation for a revised policy with the potential to bring in $2 million in new revenues annually for the town without raising taxes on a single resident. And last fall, I developed and led the passage of Brookline's Rent Stabilization Home Rule Petition, which is asking the state legislature for permission to bring rent stabilization to Brookline to help those at most risk of housing-related displacement. As a member of the Select Board, I want to continue to do what I've done in Town Meeting, build coalitions across the political spectrum to advance the policies that matter and make a difference in people's lives. I want to see a Brookline that's affordable and accessible to everyone, that offers opportunity to all, and that celebrates our diversity and honors our values. With your help, we can make that vision a reality. I'd encourage you to go to my website, alecforbrookline.com, to learn more. Thank you, and looking forward to more time with you this evening.
Thanks, Alec. Take it away, Bernard.
Thank you, and thank you to the Senior Center and the League of Women Voters for holding this forum, and thank all of you for attending and hopefully learning something about our town and how it should be governed. I'm Bernard Green. I'm Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and many of you know me. So, I'm going to try to give you some background information that'll help you, information you may not know, that will help you assess my role and potential as continuing on the Select Board. I've been in town government since 2006, when the late Emily Novick, who many of you, I think, know, urged me to run for Town Meeting, and with the help of two incredible senior advocates, Marvin Feinman and Pawnee Katz, we worked and they got me elected at Precinct 7. And from there, you know, I became engaged in a number of committees in the town, eventually serving on the Advisory Committee, and then spending seven years as Chair of the Audit Committee, which is an important committee here in this town. I've served on the Select Board now for nearly nine years, and more than three of those years, I was Chair. And during this time, I helped to navigate the town through several challenging situations and times. As Chair during COVID-19, I worked to ensure the continued operation of the town and the provision of critical town services during the global shutdown. You all remember this, providing services especially to our most to our most vulnerable residents, particularly seniors. And during the difficult period of anger around the killing of George Floyd, I successfully resisted calls to defund the police and to disparage the Brookline Police Department for things that happened elsewhere. And I mention that because that's very, very important for seniors in particular, who rely on police not just to catch robbers or protect them from being attacked in the street, but also play an important role in terms of providing the sense of security around critical institutions in town and investigations of the scams and schemes that threaten seniors, you know, throughout the country, but including here in Brookline. I'm not running for reelection to the Select Board on the promises I make during this campaign, and I will make a lot of promises, or the great ideas I have, and I have some wonderful ideas. However, I am running based on what you know about what I have done over the years here in town for the betterment of Brookline. And I see that my time is up, so I will stop right there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all for this. Hold the applause till we're done with this portion, please, and thank you all for those introductions. As I mentioned, we have four pre-selected questions from Brookline CAN and the League of Women Voters. So, we're going to ask those questions, and then we'll go to audience and public questions that were pre-submitted. So, first off, and I promise you it's not déjà vu, Brookline residents have just had a 10% property tax increase and more overrides are likely on the way. These costs borne by homeowners directly are passed on as rent hikes disproportionately impact older adults living on largely fixed budgets and anyone outside the upper class of society. Meanwhile, the current school budget represents a higher percentage of the town's total budget than all other departments put together. Many perceive that town services deteriorate, have deteriorated, and town employee salaries are not competitive with those of other surrounding communities. How will you balance or contribute to the effort to balance Brookline's efforts to maintain high-quality services, including schools, within affordable community? And David, you are first up for this one.
So, as I mentioned in my introductory remarks, we cannot continue to rely on residential property tax increases to meet the level of town and school services that we've come to expect. And so, one of the ways that we address the structural deficit is by making sure that we have very sound budgeting practices that can help inform us on critical decisions around trade-offs. And so, one way to do that, I'm personally a fan of the zero-based budgeting approach. I think it's important for every town department to justify their budget request in specific detail about why do they need what it is that is being requested, and that applies to the schools as well. No department should be sacrosanct in terms of the need to establish and present why it is that they are making a particular request. Beyond that, it's critical that we look to expand our commercial sector. We do have some opportunities for that, in particular in Chestnut Hill along Route 9 West. And as part of the comprehensive planning process, where we will be looking at every parcel in town, trying to figure out what is the most optimal use that can help generate revenue, but not just revenue generation, of course, also making sure that it meets the needs of that neighborhood and of our community as a whole. So, it is something that's complex, but it's a process that we are starting to undertake and that we need to fully commit to. Something else I'm interested in doing is renegotiating our pilots. Pilot means payment in lieu of taxes. Now, those are volun... Well, I guess I'm done, but hopefully I can address some of this later.
Yes, thank you, David and Alec.
And always happy to pick up the discussion on pilots. I've spent more time than I'd care to imagine thinking about it. I agree with David on a lot of points here. My top priority on the Select Board will be the design and implementation of a comprehensive revenue plan. The reality is, it's not just town services that are feeling the sting. We just saw major cuts to our school departments as well. We risk, if we do not explore all of our revenue options, falling into a cycle of shortfalls and devastating budget cuts, which we just simply cannot allow to occur. So, there's a couple legs to the stool here. I agree, pilots have to be one of those. As I mentioned, the plan for reform policy that we've put forward could bring in up to 2 million new revenue each year without raising taxes. Commercial development, also a very important part of this process. And I think we need to go further than just trying to align market incentives. I'd like to see direct involvement by the town in particularly small business formation. Let's get someone on the town side who can help with technical assistance with navigating the permitting process and maybe even exploring microgrants to get small businesses off the ground. I think rezoning is another key element of this. We saw a good first step with Harvard Street. We have other commercial areas that I think can accept new housing development, particularly multifamily. That's exempted from Proposition 2 and 1/2, meaning this will take the burden off of existing residents if we can intelligently develop new housing. And finally, you know, I do want to be clear here. I don't think we're in a position to break the cycle of overrides. The only community that has done so is Boston, and I don't think we're going to become Boston anytime soon. But with innovative thinking and approaches, I think we can design them more transparently. We can employ ladder voting to lower that total amount or make sure we're getting value, and we can be more transparent about how we put them together, and that's what I'd like to see.
Thanks, Alec. Bernard?
Okay, I agree with a lot of what was said, but some things that were said, I really, really disagree with for the following reason. You know, we live in a community... Sorry, Regina. Regina's always telling me to speak louder. We live in a Commonwealth that has laws such as Proposition 2 and 1/2 that make it very difficult for cities and towns like us to avoid so-called structural deficit. I'm not going to stand here and say that I have a silver bullet to fix that. I am going to say that I do have a way to begin to minimize the harm and hurt that Proposition 2 and 1/2 and other things inflict on us. One thing I will not do is suggest that pilots are a silver bullet. And I really disagree with the idea that this is a panacea for anything here in Brookline. $2 million out of a $300 million budget doesn't really sound like much. And number two, if you go to the website of the Pilot Committee, you can get a list of the nonprofit organizations here in Brookline that do not pay pilots. And I wonder if you can figure out how those organizations, mainly small church organizations and others, could generate the income to pay pilots despite the fact that their buildings have a lot of value. That mismatch is what makes the idea that there's $2 million of money on the money tree that we can use just a fantasy.
Thanks, Bernard. Susan?
Thank you, and I'd have to agree with Bernard here. This whole money tree fantasy is, you know, magical thinking. So, we have to look and see what we can really do to... The 60-40 split is obviously leaning heavily on the 60%. And so, to really work on that, to move that needle back, well, one, after managing a home for almost three decades and sending two graduated from college already, we have to look and spend carefully. You know, I was, when I was on the Advisory Committee, on the Finance Committee, there was a Warren article that asked for an audit of the schools. And basically, it's just to see where we're spending, where are we overspending? And in audit, for most of us, you know, what are we afraid of? Let's really see, look at the numbers. So, I voted yes on this Warren article. Unfortunately, it didn't pass. So, if I am on the Select Board, you see where my head is going already. I want to know, I want to uncover under rocks and boulders, where is all this spending? So, that's one thing. The second thing is, if we want to offset, you know, all this, if we have these overrides year after year, we need to offset that. And the way to do that is also to increase our commercial tax revenue, you know, so that... And I have an idea how to do that. I have a passion for it. I've talked to the Planning Department. They love my idea. You need leadership for that, and I can do it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you all. Second question of the pre-prepared questions. In 2016, Brookline adopted its Complete Streets program. And while this process has and continues to yield new bike lanes and more pedestrian-friendly sidewalks, it's also led to a loss of some parking, and some, including some seniors, worry about access to local shops or parking for their caregivers. And so, how would you balance thinking about Complete Streets and that process and some of those goals with access for people still relying on cars or those using cars? Alec, you're at first.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. It's a really great question, and I know one that really matters to this group. You know, I think we need to be very deliberate about ensuring Brookline, the entire town, is accessible to people of all abilities and all transit modes. The sad reality is, right now, due to shortages of parking in some areas, but also due to really poor, I think, sidewalk and road conditions in other areas, there are folks who are accessibility limited or perhaps mobility limited, who simply cannot access all parts of Brookline. So, I think ensuring adequate parking access is a big portion of that solution. But another part of the solution is, I think, continuing the Complete Streets process. You know, while not everyone is able or will choose to use a bike to get around, the more folks we encourage to adopt biking or pedestrian mobility options, the more availability for parking there will be for folks who do need to use a car or choose to use a car to get around. So, you know, I don't see these two processes necessarily in contention. I think if we're intelligent about the way we implement Complete Streets and where we build biking infrastructure, they can actually complement each other and also reduce our per capita emissions as well and help us stay on course for our aggressive sustainability goals. So, you know, I think we can do a lot of incredible things in Brookline. We're, I just recently learned, the most educated community in the country. Almost two-thirds of us have at least graduate degrees, so I think we can handle these two issues at the same time. We can chew gum and walk at the same time.
Thanks, Alec. Bernard?
Thank you. I agree with Alec to some degree with respect to how we can balance both Complete Streets and making sure that certain communities are not excluded from the consideration of the implementation of that. And that's an issue that the Select Board has been trying to address by ensuring that, a few things. Number one, ensuring that senior advocates are on boards and commissions so that their voices are heard and so that people who know what the issues are, the unique needs of seniors, are actually at the table when decisions are made about Complete Streets or any other issue. But you know, it's not just seniors that have to be on the boards and commissions. We all are owed. I mean, I am, anyway. But that's not the reason why I have ideas that relate to the needs of seniors. It's those people who have thought about unique needs of seniors and who have worked to implement those, their goals that we're looking for on boards and commissions. But also, we have to make sure that departments, boards, and commissions, even if they're composed of teenagers, have on their agenda, how does this affect seniors? How does this affect other communities? Because it's not just on us as seniors to think about these things. This has to be... This has to be an issue that everyone considers so that we don't end up with a situation where certain groups or certain age groups' needs are satisfied and others are not. So I think my time's up, so.
Thanks, Bernard. Susan?
Okay, this is a great question and a really important question, especially since the process is unfolding. And I think it's really important that all of us here come to the table. You know, we're all welcome, and it's important that you are seen and heard. And the way that you're seen and heard is to have a place at the table and to share the things that are important to you. After speaking to the transportation director, I've been on the phone with him a couple of times, went to the Sam Mintz interview. And, you know, there is a little bit of misinformation. He was saying that the complete streets is really for everyone. It's for our entire community, for the young, for the old. And we're going to work together and figure out how and what to do so that the sidewalks accommodate, one, seniors. And me having in-laws who are almost 90, you know, if the sidewalks are not flat, you know, seniors can fall, hurt themselves, have a hip replacement. It's not good. So that's one thing. The other thing is with bikes, we want to make sure bike lanes are marked well and green so that cars can see bikers clearly. So we want to accommodate them too. We want to make sure there's lighting. Lighting for everyone so that they're not stumbling in the dark and hurting themselves. So there's a way to do this, but my last words is that we want to hear from everyone, and everyone's welcome.
Thanks, Susan. David?
So I'm also going to invoke complete streets, but as a part of comprehensive planning as well, because we want to make sure ultimately that all of our neighborhoods are accessible and are walkable and are safe. And in order to do that, we need to make sure that we do have plenty of parking, especially for seniors and those who have mobility impairments, that our sidewalks are flat and properly repaired so that they're wheelchair accessible and also accessible for those of young children. I'm a father of a nine-month-old, so I'm noticing this a lot more now, some of our sidewalks that have cracks in them and divots. And so that's also a part of it. We want to make sure we have adequate lighting, so it's not just the street infrastructure itself, but how well lit are some of these areas that are also traversed by our seniors? Because sometimes it's not about the surface, it's about can you see because it's too dark. So that's another important element of this. I do not see the interests of bicyclists and of automobile traffic and of our seniors as in opposition to one another. It's not a competition. We can provide infrastructure for all three. And actually, as Alec had mentioned earlier, the more bike-friendly you get in certain areas, thereby reducing the amount of traffic to an area, the more space you potentially have for those who truly need vehicles. And so I think this can work in concert with one another, and that would be my approach.
Thank you, David. So moving on to our next question. So Warren articles brought forward by the E-Zero Admissions Advisory Board in November 2022, aimed at eliminating fossil fuel emissions in Brookline, have created confusion and fear among some of Brookline's older residents about whether or not they'll be required to retrofit their houses or purchase an electric car. And want to ask about this specifically as an example of communication with the public. So as a member of the select board, what would you do to ensure that complex issues like this are sufficiently discussed with the public to promote a thorough understanding and create this kind of fear and confusion in the future? Bernard, you're up first.
The select board actually spoke with the beginning of this year to make sure that their work is consistent with the needs of the town. And I think that we have a relationship with ZAB now where the communication issues that I think were a problem in the past can be addressed. You know, ZAB has done a number of things in their electrification initiative, including providing how-to documents on their website to help seniors and other residents of the town to figure out how to address issues of electrification. Electrification for many people is going to be very expensive, and many people won't be able to do it. We have to acknowledge the fact that not everyone is going to have a geothermal plant in their backyard. That's not going to eliminate our climate crisis. Brookline is such a small speck on the globe that we don't need to hurt, you know, certain segments of our population in order to ensure that our climate actions are, you know, are totally complete. And what I mean by that is that we have to bear in mind that we're balancing needs of our residents, particularly seniors and others, with the need to minimize or reduce our fossil fuel usage and electrify our community. That's the balancing. It's going to be difficult, but it has to be done.
Thanks, Bernard. Susan?
Excuse me. So what I would do if I were elected as select board member is, one, fill the sustainability director. There is, this role has still been unfilled for, I don't even know how long. And this person will be, work with the communications director that was recently hired. And we will educate and get the information out. And being a former department head at an international school, and I taught, I started out teaching middle school, high school, college. I have a passion for educating, and I have a passion for just coming alongside and just filling in those gaps. So I would really help with this, and not only that, but, you know, like Wellesley, they have an awesome climate dashboard. And if you go to this town, you can see, it's like really easy to like walk through. It helps you to get more green, to electrify if you want. And there's all these different stages. If you're ready to go and you're motivated, here's option A. If you're really hesitant and you're not really sure, there's still some, you know, some things that you could do, like getting LED light bulbs. But there's a lot of different options. And I think making sure that our public understands all the different ways that we can reach our climate goals is the key. It's not like, you know, it's not all or nothing. There's a wide gray space in between, and I want to help us get there. Thanks.
Thanks, Susan. David?
Electrification can indeed pose a financial challenge for many of us. But fortunately, there are some other climate mitigation measures that we're able to take, both as a town and at the individual level, to help do our part to reduce emissions. So for instance, walking more and utilizing public transportation, we've already addressed that a little bit. That certainly helps. Even something like putting Saran Wrap on your basement windows, that can help reduce draft and energy waste from a home. LED lights, as was mentioned, can also help. There are window air pumps that actually work both for air conditioning as well as heat that tend to be a lot more affordable. Then as a town, certainly supporting the initiatives of the sustainability director. And on the school committee side, I actually was the lead drafter for a sustainability policy that we were able to pass for school committee. And we also created a sustainability task force that's been divided into six different areas to look into sustainability issues in a comprehensive way. The sustainability task force meets regularly. They make recommendations. They've already implemented some of those recommendations. We have composting at more of our schools, for instance. I think this approach of a task force that utilizes a lot of our experts in the community is a great way to both increase civic engagement and also provide broader education on the subject.
Thanks, David. Alec?
Thanks, Michael. I'll talk very briefly about the ZAB articles, and then I do want to address the main part of the question. So I certainly agree that requiring people to electrify is not the way forward, but we should be supporting that work. And in fact, it does have the potential to yield real savings to residents and reduced heating costs, while also helping us meet our emissions goals. Just to put folks at ease, you know, climate action is very important to me. It's the defining challenge, I think, facing my generation. What I've said at other forums and what I'll pledge to you today is I will not support any new fees on residents to fund climate initiatives without putting that to a direct vote by the residents. I think that's a fair compromise. On to communication and transparency. I think they're absolutely essential to the way our local government functions. And I'm proud to have consistently voted in favor of increasing transparency at town meeting. In fact, I am the only candidate running for select board who voted to make the town meeting listserv open to the public, which is now a bit of a moot point because of the great work that Brookline News is doing. And you can check out those emails on their website. But we had the option to, without paying the costs, to provide those records to Brookline News, make it publicly available. I supported that, and unfortunately, the other candidates did not. I think our town website needs a full redesign. It's just simply inaccessible. It's convoluted. It's outdated. I cannot tell you how many times I've gotten constituent contacts just to help them navigate the town website. So that will be a priority for me. I also like the approach that's been taken by two of our current select board members, which is the publication of a regular newsletter. I would certainly commit to doing that as a member of the select board as well. And I hope I'm able to keep you more informed going forward.
Thank you very much. So you get elected, you're on the select board. Let's say you had a chance to do only one thing. What would your one thing be? Starting with Susan?
The one thing that I would do for our town, I would want to hear from my constituents. I would want to hear from our community because everyone has a different need. We have parents with kids, students. We have seniors. We have young professionals. We have young families who need a home. And I want to, you know, hear from everyone because when we put our heads together, we can really make a difference and we can come up with the solutions. So, I mean, that would be my one thing. And then, once we have the information, then, you know, I'm known to roll up my sleeves and get to it. You know, I want to solve problems. I want outcomes. And, you know, everything that I've put my hand to, we created something that was better, including during COVID. I was the PTO chair for the RLA school. We were building the plane while we were flying it. And with my team, we basically built community. And so we solved a lot of problems. We brought people together. We brought a lot of joy, and that's basically what I would want to do for our town. And I would need to hear from, you know, people would come forward and share your concerns because that's really important to me, is the human side of it. And then we get to it and find solutions.
Thanks, Susan. David?
Improving the quality of life of our residents. And that includes making sure we're a more affordable community, making sure that we open up amenities that already exist within our borders to our residents. So where I was going before with bringing up pilots is if we renegotiate our pilots, even just for purposes of having our nonprofit universities and private high schools and elementary schools say, "Two days a week, our fields are open to Brookline residents. Dexter has an observatory. Twice a month, Brookline residents can come to our observatory." That wouldn't cost them anything directly. And actually, it would possibly reduce our expenditure somewhat because we wouldn't need to maybe rent as many playing fields, rent as many other amenities that we currently do, and it would improve quality of life. Then in terms of these affordability initiatives, incentivizing affordable housing, engaging in the comprehensive plan, complete streets so that our residents are happier because they're not getting into as many accidents because we have our roads being properly maintained, our sidewalks being repaired, and et cetera. So I do think that quality of life should always be at the center of any initiative that we take, whether it's proper budgeting, whether it's fixing our streets, whether it is providing more amenities to the public. That should always be at the core of it.
Thanks, David. Alec?
So hard to pick just one, but I think the most important issue facing our town right now is what we heard earlier in the school committee panel, our structural deficit. As I mentioned previously, this is the ticking time bomb. This is what threatens to put us into a vicious cycle of revenue shortfalls and service cuts that will affect our quality of life here. So as I mentioned, my top priority on the select board will be creating a comprehensive revenue plan. And we don't need to reinvent the wheel here. We, as it was mentioned by Jesse Hefter earlier, we convened a fiscal advisory committee for years that came up with many great recommendations. Unfortunately, they have largely been ignored by our current leadership. In fact, some of those recommendations included implementing a new audit rotation policy and reexamining our pilot policy. Though no action was taken on those recommendations until myself and my colleague Mike Toffel in town meeting put Warren articles on the docket and made them go forward. Similarly, we've got great studies that have already been done on where we can do or drive commercial development like Route Nine. What we lack is focused political leadership. This is what I want to bring to the select board. And like I mentioned, I think transparency is key here. As I said, you know, overrides are going to be part of our civic life in Brookline for the foreseeable future. But they can be more transparent. We can utilize ladder voting to ensure we don't raise taxes any more than is necessary or acceptable to residents. And we can also take an innovative policy approach to reducing that overall ask. For instance, raising the CPA surcharge 1% brings in millions in state funding as opposed to just a 1% increase in an override. So that's what I'd like to address.
Thanks, Alec. Bernard?
Thank you. To say what one thing we would do is kind of a difficult, if not silly, question. As soon as you start focusing on one thing, the town is so complex that many other things begin to fall apart. But since you insist, the thing that I would focus on and that I've always focused on is how do we maintain financial stability of our town under the difficult circumstances of state law as well as, you know, the condition of our economy over time? Yeah, that requires a lot of little structural things in terms of how the select board operates, how the town budget process operates, and other things in order to provide the type of stability that enable us to do all the other things that we want to do. Everything from services to addressing housing affordability, addressing environmental issues, et cetera. My approach has been to try to structure the way that the select board relates to the budget, which is not our budget when it goes to town meeting. But we can relate to the budget in such a way that we will have some control, not control, but we will have some influence to departments as they put together their budget with respect to long-term concerns and long-term goals that we as a select board have. Our concerns and goals, of course, are based on what we're hearing from the community, and we hear a lot. And we incorporate that into the process. And my time's up, so if you want me to talk more about that, see me afterwards.
Thank you very much. So we're going to move to some questions. So if you want to ask a question, throw your hands up. I'll get a little sense. We have a couple. Okay, and we're going to go question from the audience, question from pre-submissions from the community.
Will any of you make a commitment to have one hour a month office hours? The second question is, will any of you make a commitment that the town administrator, one hour a month, has office hours? Because the notion of transparency, great communication, being seen and heard. There are a number of us who have tried to have that happen, and promises have been made, and they haven't been lived up to. So is there a commitment on the part of each of you?
Question about office hours. David first?
As to myself, I would certainly commit to regular office hours and probably more than an hour a month. I actually do that now as a part of being chair of the school committee. When someone requests a meeting with me, I'll meet with them. And that is something that I will take with me to the select board if elected. I will meet with anyone. Now, in terms of what I would ask of the town administrator, I would be just one out of five on the select board, so that's not necessarily my call alone. But I would certainly encourage the town administrator to meet with constituents because I do agree that it's an important part of transparency and good government to make our leadership available to the public. And I do think that it's a good practice for all of us to regularly make ourselves available. And so that's a commitment I'd absolutely make.
Thanks, David. Alec?
Love this question. Love this question. Love the idea. Would absolutely commit to, I agree with David. I think one hour a month is, is the bare minimum. I think you could do several more hours a month. I also agree, I think, with David's assessment in terms of the town administrator. I would certainly be a vote in favor of having town administrator office hours, but again, that would have to be a board decision requiring majority. You know, as to my record on responsiveness, there's a number of precinct eight constituents I see in the room. I've written back to every single constituent piece of outreach I've gotten, phone calls, emails, and texts. I've also endeavored to do that in the course of the select board campaign. Even in the case where there, people are very angry with me, or, you know, just strongly disagree. If you write to me, I will always get back to you. So my commitment is I'll have as much of an open door policy as working full-time and being a volunteer select board member permits. And of course, would commit to those office hours.
Thanks, Alec. Bernard.
Actually, right now, I have 24 hours, seven day a week, office hours. People call me. And I answer the phone, as, as everyone knows. People write to me. I try to write back where, where, where appropriate. The select board is trying to set up, is beginning to set up a system whereby emails that come into the select board are addressed by a selected select board member. And no email, except for, of course, the template emails. No email is ignored, one way or the other. But like I said, 24 hours, seven days a week, I, I get phone calls. People are not unreasonable, though, so I don't, I don't get them at three o'clock in the morning. But, you know, we, we, we get phone calls, we respond, and it's a very important way of communicating and finding out what is on people's minds, so.
Thanks, Bernard. Susan.
Yes, and I absolutely agree. I am available via email or phone or even on my website. If you go to my website, there's all these different options, and there's even a place where you can write to me and write a letter. So that, that's what my former English teacher had on. But, you know, even now, when people text me or call me, you know, I say, what, would you like to talk on the phone, or would you like to go get coffee or Zoom? So I'm totally open to the public, to my constituents, to really anyone. And, you know, if someone calls, you know, I might not get back at that hour, but I will get back to everyone. So I, I believe I have a track record for that. And, and what's even better would be even having a meal together. Because when you have a meal together, you have lunch, dinner, then you can really hear what the other person has to say. So absolutely on the office hours.
Well, thank you all. So it's a question that was submitted ahead of time from someone. So under Massachusetts law, all employees who work for over a year are eligible for up to 26 weeks of paid family and medical leave to take care of themselves, their family members, or bond with children. Municipalities, however, are uniquely not required to participate in the system, but may opt in. Brooklyn has not done so, and offers a comparatively austere four weeks of paid parental and no paid medical leave to non-union employees. Union contracts, meanwhile, also offer worse benefits than the state system, as highlighted by the recent Newton teachers' strike, where a lack of paid leave comparable to what all other workers in the state receive was a major bargaining issue. So as a member of the select board, would you support Brooklyn's participation in the Massachusetts paid family and medical leave system? Alec.
Yeah, this is a great question. I, I do support that. And I think one of the major issues confronting our town from the management perspective is it's a very competitive municipal employment market. And, you know, as we've talked at length about, we are facing fiscal constraints. So sometimes it can be hard for Brookline to compete on just raw salary numbers alone. Well, innovative and creative solution to that issue is what can we offer in terms of benefits to make Brookline a very attractive employer? And the reality is with this new state program, the 26 weeks has become the standard in terms of employment across the Commonwealth, except for our municipality and other municipalities that similarly have not opted in. So I think meeting that new standard will go a long way to helping us not only attract great talent to our municipal government, but also in retaining it. We lose a lot of great staff to the private market, to other municipalities. So I think that needs to be a consideration as we think about how can we attract and retain our talent? How can we maintain the staff we need to continue providing excellent municipal services? And how can we compensate for not necessarily being able to match or exceed some of those private sector salary numbers? So I think this is a good, a good step forward in a good way to show our employees that we value them and that we do want to keep them around in this community. So I appreciate the question. I'm very much in favor of it.
Thanks, Alec. Bernard.
Few months ago, Miriam Ashkenazi, a member of the select board, asked me to put paid parental leave on our agenda, and I did, and we voted it. Now, that doesn't apply to unionized workers who are subject to negotiated, negotiated benefits. But I don't know where the idea that we don't have paid parental leave in the town of Brookline comes from. But, you know, we did vote that, and I agree that's an important benefit for employees, especially during these times.
Thanks, Prime. Susan.
Yes, great question. In fact, I was just talking with my sister about this a few days ago, and we were talking about the importance of paid parental leave. Because when, you know, when families have children, a lot of, there's trauma that happens to a woman's body after you have a baby. And it takes time to recover. And, you know, it's wonderful when also the husband's, wife-husband can assist and support. You know, so I think, you know, I agree with what everyone said, to be competitive and to keep people in Brookline, we want to offer the same things that other towns that are similar to Brookline offer. And I just, being a mom of three daughters, and I just think that it's, it is really important that parents have some time, you know, before they go back to work, and they should get paid. So I definitely support that. But, but I'm also, I want to say, but I'm also open to like, let's discuss, let's talk, let's, let's look at this together, so.
Thanks, Susan. David.
I certainly agree that paid parental leave is critically important. We want to have high morale in our public employees. And it's difficult to do that if we're falling short in certain metrics. Something that I am very proud, though, that we do as a town. So the public schools of Brookline have a program called Materials Fee Students. And that allows the children of municipal employees, not just teachers, but municipal employees as well, to attend the public school system for a reduced rate. And there are a lot of our municipal employees who take advantage of that program. And that is something that I believe has been effective in helping to recruit highly talented individuals to come work for Brookline. And we need to be creative in finding other examples, such as that one, that we could utilize as a community to try to encourage more high-quality applicants to come to Brookline and to work for our various municipal departments. I am perhaps, other than Bernard, the only candidate who has very direct experience with collective bargaining. So parental leave and the rights of our employees is something that is often central to collective bargaining negotiations. And I've been a part of multiple successful and timely negotiations with the Brookline Educators Union with AFSMI, where I am also a member of the negotiation subcommittee of the school committee. And certainly, many of us, all of us, I would say, want to make sure that our employees are well taken care of.
Thank you. Uh, yeah. So here to stand up last time, you're next. You'll be next. So is Erica. Cool.
Hi, thank you. My name is Alan Shephro. I'm a resident of precinct nine. And I've got a question about monies, tax monies that are received by the town of Brookline. I recently read on Brookline News that the town received $225,000. I'm going to round it up to a quarter of a million dollars. And I would unders, I was, it's been understood that this money was supposed to have been earmarked for something artsy in town. Now, reading on this news article on Brookline News, this quarter of a million dollars was used to paint and decorate 10 electric utility boxes throughout the town of Brookline. That's basically $22,500 per electric utility box. So my question is, when we get this money, and this money came from the federal government, what, there are some 255 town meeting members, five select board members. We've got many other people who affect the budget here in Brookline. Why couldn't this money, which is supposed to be, again, earmarked for artsy-type concerns, be given to something artsy within the town budget? And then take that money and reallocate it for things like the crappy roads that we have here in Brookline. And I'm talking about the area of Harvard Street going down towards Alston past TJ Maxx, or the fact that why do, why does a senior center have to do a lot of its own fundraising?
Thanks, Alan. So I'm, please hold your applause. And Alec. Or do I, did I have it wrong? Bernard first this time? Did I get, I missed my cyclop. Yeah. Okay, Bernard first.
I mean, you can't remember. So, yes, there was money coming from ARPA, federal funds, that were used for what you call artsy-type projects. You know, art is not some type of unnecessary thrill. You know, art really is important for the, the, the mental well-being of a community. And whether you like the use of this money to paint the, the utility boxes, I mean, that, we can discuss that. But I, I think that you cannot say that art plays a very important role. The beautification of the town, music, and, and other artistic, you know, endeavors, which are not only important for our town, but are a critical part of our education, educational system. So, you know, we, we can talk about whether that's best use. I think it, I, I like the fact that the utility boxes don't look so crappy. And, and that they, they beautify the streets here in Brookline. But, you know, I, 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 I like them if that's, if that's the question you're asking.
Thanks, Bernard. Susan.
Okay, so the way I understand ARPA funds is that the money has to go towards something that, you know, you were impacted by COVID. And so the way I understand it is that to decorate these utility boxes, you know, the whole idea of beautifying Brookline with art is something that, like Bernard was saying, could be very appealing to part of some of the public. And I will say, my mom, she was an artist. She was designer, and my daughters are artists as well. They get it from grandma, because I'm not that artsy myself. But I do think that, you know, it's kind of similar to some of the, you know, if, if you go around Brookline, they painted part of the, the half wall. And, I mean, it does beautify Brookline. And but having said that, I think it is important to use our money wisely. But I think from what Bernard was saying, this was ARPA money, and there's, there's a prerequisite of how you spend the ARPA money, so.
Thanks, Susan. David.
I, I do think it's important to look at the fine print about any restrictions for spending that money. Oftentimes with ARPA or with grants in general, it's for a very detailed purpose. And so you might not be able to divert those resources as easily as one might think. However, if it were truly a complete choice for town meeting, as you presented a hypothetical, I would certainly agree with you that that's not our highest priority. And when we are dealing in difficult fiscal times, it's critically important to spend the dollars that we do have coming in very wisely. And that's why I had mentioned earlier that I think zero-based budgeting is critical, so that every department is justifying its asks, that, and in that manner, we can have a transparent discussion about trade-offs and see what would be the best way to spend any additional money that's coming in. But again, specifically to this ARPA money, there were likely certain restrictions around how precisely it could be spent.
Thanks, David. Alec.
Yeah, really appreciate the question, Alan. And I think we are in such a budget situation that's going to require us more and more every year to distinguish between what is the nice-to-haves and the need-to-haves. And my mother is also an artist, so she'd probably tell me if I didn't make space to say that public art is important, and there is a really important role for it in our community. But, you know, ARPA money was also earmarked for use to assist folks who were hardest hit by the pandemic. Well, in Brookline, that includes seniors, and that includes residents of color. And in fact, a recent award, it was almost the same amount, I believe it was a little bit less, but still over $200,000, was just made to the Brookline Community Development Corporation for rental assistance. And the expectation is that will keep dozens of families in their homes in Brookline, where they otherwise would be forced out. So from my perspective, that is certainly not the best use of that money. Not when we're seeing budget cuts to nearly every municipal department this year. Not when we're seeing significant cuts made in the K through five world language program. Not when we have a senior center, as you mentioned, that can't seem to even get a fresh coat of paint funded by the town. And certainly not when we have so many critical senior programs that are solely reliant on grant awards and not funded by our local monies. So as I said, you know, it's unfortunate, but we're in a situation where we're going to have to make tough choices. And in this case, I would have liked to have seen that money put to better use as well.
Okay, so we're going to have time for two more questions, one more of the pre-submitted questions, and then I promised one in the back. So the last pre-submitted question that we have is, what's your stance on a charter commission to explore becoming a city? Susan.
Okay, so, of course, I'm open to exploring it. I mean, I, the way I understand it is if you put it on the ballot, there's a study committee to look at it. So when it's presented that way, and if we give our town the choice, then, I mean, that's what I would want to do. For, for a decision as big as this, it's up to Brookline. And so everyone's voice is important. And I totally am okay with looking into it, studying it, looking at the pros and cons. But I do think that it's really important that when we study it, it's, it's to really think about the, all the details, because sometimes, like what we've seen in the past, questions were put on the ballot, and you don't have all the, the details, and then you vote on things that, you know, you, you really didn't mean to vote on. So I think this is very important to get it right, look at the details, and and the people on that, on the committee. It should be very balanced, and, you know, people know what they're doing. So that's my answer. Thanks.
Thanks, Susan. David.
There's certainly nothing wrong with exploring what an alternative form of government could look like. We always want to have the ideal form of government. I personally, however, would be extremely reluctant to endorse any change that would reduce the amount of democratic participation that we have today. I think that part of what makes Brookline such a special community is that we have so many people who are thoughtfully engaged at all levels. And they run for town meeting, and they apply to serve on various committees. I would hate to lose that and to have power rest in a smaller number of hands. I think that can be very risky. So that's, so I do appreciate our current model, but certainly there's no harm to looking at certain changes from it. If we can improve it further, I just do not want to move away from broad-based democracy. I think that's a critical function of government. It's critical to transparency, and I don't want to be alienating our constituents by pushing them further away from the process and from the major decisions.
Thanks, David. Alec.
This is a great question. I am a strong supporter of putting a charter commission question on the ballot and have in fact been gathering signatures for the Brookline City Charter Campaign, which some of you may have heard of. You know, the last time we as a town comprehensively analyzed and reviewed our system of government was about 100 years ago, when we moved from an open town meeting to a representative town meeting. That was the last time we made changes to what in essence is our town charter. So, you know, I think waiting a century to do any kind of comprehensive review of such a critical function is probably not wise. And I do like the charter commission process, because ultimately, it puts the power in the hands of the voters. It'll be up to the voters, once this is on the ballot, whether we begin an exploration. It'll be up to the voters who will be on that commission. And I have good expectation that Brookline voters will choose a, a really great or excellent group of nine people. And ultimately, whatever that panel of nine comes back to us with, after exploring the various options available to us, it'll be up to the voters again to give that final approval. And there have been many cases in comparable communities where this process has taken many years, where there have been multiple charter proposals brought forward that have been shot down by the voters until ultimately their concerns have been that have been shot down by the voters until ultimately their concerns have been addressed. So it's a lengthy process, but it's one that is very democratic. It's going to allow us to explore what we do well, what we could improve, what we can do better. And ultimately, it'll be up to the voters of Brookline, the people, to choose whether we want to make any actual changes. So I am a very strong supporter.
Thanks, Alec. Bernard.
So here in Brookline, we have, uh, we've done three things with respect to, um, our form of government. First of all, there's the campaign for charter change, which I think is a good way to begin to flush out the issues and begin the process of, uh, of considering, uh, whether we want to change our form of government. But there's also a moderators committee that is, is meeting and is scheduled to report, I believe in June, uh, about, uh, you know, what types of government forms are feasible for a town like Brookline. And thirdly, the select board back in December, um, decided to put on the, uh, annual, uh, community survey, uh, some questions to sort of flesh out what people are thinking about in terms of the, the problems with our, our form of government. Uh, I'm not going to commit to one, one, uh, one approach or the other until I, until we go through the process and I see, you know, what the, uh, pros and cons are of town versus city or modified town or modified city. Remember, it, the fact that we have a town meeting of two hundred and, I think, fifty-five people means that that men, that number of people are deeply involved in the met, in the governance of our town. In a city with a, uh, um, with a mayor and a city council, there's less involvement of the community. Now, there are good and bad aspects of that. We have a community that's highly educated, as I think someone said recently, um, which means that we have people who know a lot and think they know it all. And that can be very, very disruptive. Um, but you know, that's a type of inefficiency that maybe, uh, we want to accept, uh, instead of a more efficient but less, uh, transparent and less, uh, in-inclusive, uh, government form. Thank you.
Thanks, Bernard. And, uh, last question.
Arthur Conquest, town meeting member from Precinct Six. The issues, um, that we've been discussing this afternoon, uh, have a lot to do with the town finances. What have we learned from the Gerald Alston debacle? Okay, and what will we do in the future to never let it happen again? And I'm, you know, I, I'm welcoming to hear your responses on that.
Okay, David, you first.
Uh, I, I think it boils down to what have we learned from what happened with Gerald Alston and that settlement process? Um, and, um, with a spirit of hopefully avoiding that again. So, uh, David.
I think it's critically important that as a community, we don't operate in an overly legalistic fashion and develop this mindset that because we might be able to win in a courtroom, let's fight things out until the very end and drag things on for years and years. In my opinion, the Gerald Alston case very likely could have been resolved very early on had we treated him respectfully and had we dealt with the initial incident right then and there by supporting an aggrieved employee. Unfortunately, that's not what happened. And as we all know, the, uh, conflict continued for many years. So if I'm elected to the select board, I will want to resolve such situations very early on in the process and try to not allow them to, uh, boil up out of control. It becomes expensive financially. It also becomes very costly emotionally. Look what it did in terms of dividing our community. What kind of message are we sending to our minority population in particular? When we don't stand up for our public employees of color who have been treated abominably. And if we deal with situations as they occur and we do it swiftly and, uh, with candor and also in a, and a nurturing manner rather than legalistic and getting armed with lawyers and right away going straight to a fight, I think that would really help us.
Thanks, David. Alec.
Yeah, I, I think this is a really critically important question and I thank you for it, Arthur. Um, to put this into context for folks who may not know, the final settlement that we ended up paying for, a mistake, let's be honest, that town employees made and that town leadership only aggravated, was eleven million dollars. This is roughly the size of the last override that we passed last year. So not only does racism harm our community, lower staff morale, it harms our town finances. It puts all of us at risk. So we need to make it absolutely clear from the top down that there is no room for racism, for prejudice of any kind in Brookline. And frankly, as David mentioned, we need leadership that is more interested in apologizing when necessary and righting the harm, righting the wrong than we are in defending the town in court ad nauseam. I think I agree with David. That issue could have been resolved quickly and more justly, I think, than it ultimately was. Uh, and as I mentioned, it cost the, our community dearly, both in terms of, uh, morale, uh, community spirit and divisiveness, but also monetarily. Um, so this is something we absolutely cannot tolerate. And the reality is, the select board sets the tone for these things. The select board makes these decisions. Um, if I'm on the select board, I absolutely, uh, will not permit any prejudice or racism to occur uh, within our town employees. And I will do everything possible to ensure that if something does happen, we focus on righting the wrong and correcting the harm rather than trying to prove who's ultimately right in court.
Thanks, Alec. Bernard.
Okay. Now, let, let's be very clear. This question is directed at me. Because I was on the select board, I was on the select board when, after threatening to shoot up the firehouse, including shooting up the firehouse and, and, uh, where, where his black supervisor was, uh, in a meeting with him. Um, and after the use of illicit drugs, um, and refusal then to even engage with us in any way to try to resolve this and very empathetically address his concerns, we had to fire him. Now, maybe, you know, you object to that. But, you know, there's a lot more to Gerald Alston's situation than I think we hear about, um, many times. Uh, I would also warn against someone coming onto the select board saying that they're going to resolve a problem. That's what happened that resulted in the eleven million dollar settlement. Right? A select board, uh, uh, or a person ran for select board, got on the select board, was appointed to the negotiating committee after he had written or signed on to an amicus brief against the town. And that person negotiated, quote unquote, with, uh, Mr. Alston and his attorney and came back to the select board. And let me add, I was precluded from being involved in that in any way because I was being sued personally. And the Ethics, uh, Commission said that I couldn't engage in, in this, in, in any discussion. But came back to the select board, minus me, and convinced, uh, it to agree to a settlement of eleven million dollars, which was way out of, out of bounds with respect to the, the, the type of, uh, uh, recovery. Anything near what happened to Mr. Alston, uh, would have, would have returned. Uh, and I'm running out of time, but there's millions and millions of things more that can be said about that.
Thank you, Bernard. Susan.
Okay, so this question is a really good one. And, um, the people who sit on the select board, the leadership of Brookline, all of us, if whoever gets on there, you know, it's, it's the spirit of humility, the spirit to be able to admit when you're wrong and to take issues and to, you know, be able to have the strength to come, you know, bring everyone to the table. I mean, it, it, it boils down to, you know, we know how it works. When each side thinks they're right and you get lawyers involved, no offense, guys, you know. And, and the next thing you know, it's, it's about, don't talk to anyone, the problem gets worse, it escalates year after year after year. And that's, that's what happened. And so, you know, the select board members, if I'm, if I'm on there, I will do my very best to try to hear both sides. But really what it boils down to is everyone has, everyone has done their own part. And we need the wisdom to be able to see that. You know, what is everyone's part in this and then make decisions based on that.
Uh, thank you, Susan. And, um, that's going to be it for our questions. Uh, and so, uh, two minutes each for just closing statements to wrap things up. Uh, Alec, you are first up.
Thanks, Michael. And thank you all for coming out here, uh, to listen to us this afternoon, evening. Uh, it makes it much more enjoyable to do these things when we have an audience. So we appreciate you for coming out to listen to this. I, I think rigorous discussion about municipal policy and, and the real differences that exist between the candidates running for select board. Um, I do want to encourage folks, uh, in the full spirit of transparency. Uh, don't just judge us by our words. I encourage you to judge us by our actions as well. Um, and I have, uh, as a candidate, taken steps that I think can try and make, uh, this race a little more transparent. Uh, if you go to my website, alecforbrookline.com, you can see our full town meeting voting records uh, for all four of us over the last two years. Uh, I'd encourage you all to take a look, uh, get to know the, the differences, both in approach and policy between us. And hopefully that will, uh, help you make up your mind. And what I think is a very tough choice, uh, in, on May seventh. You know, we've been asked frequently, what would we reflect on after our first term? Um, and judge it to be a success by. Um, there's two things that I really would like to see happen. One is, if I've made local government more transparent and more accessible to more folks, I think that would be a massive victory. Um, it's very frequent that members of the select board will assign issue areas to specialists on the board. I'd very much like to be the transparency czar on the town, on the select board. As I said, I think we need a full website redesign. I'm committed to doing everything I individually can, uh, to make our government more accessible and more responsive to you. And secondly, I think affordability has to be one of the top priorities. We've talked a lot about the levers we can pull for that. Housing, better budget management, uh, really controlling our overrides and, and making those more transparent. Um, and of course, the revenue strategy I've mentioned. Um, so I hope I can earn your vote on May seventh or earlier. Uh, I think we've heard a lot about my priorities this evening. And like I said, uh, I'd encourage you to visit alecforbrookline.com. And I hope I've earned your support. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alec. Uh, and please hold the applause. Bernard.
Yes, thank you again for holding this forum. It's a very good opportunity to, uh, learn about, uh, not only the candidates for the select board, but also about what it means to be a member of, of, of a governing body of a town and the complexity of running a town like Brookline. I asked for your vote and I believe that, uh, your vote will be worth giving because my experience in town government, not only nine years on the select board, but eighteen years in town meeting, has given me an understanding of the complexity of running a town, the complexity of serving on the select board. There are no easy answers. And anyone who says that there are, you should ask them what they are. You know, I know how to get done, get things done, not in terms of quick, uh, turnover or quick answers, but in terms of the small and difficult things you have to do, step by step to get to a conclusion, um, and get to a solution to a problem. I've gotten things done, not for the town, but especially for seniors and other members of our community. Never by showboating, but by just quiet behind-the-scenes work. Uh, to do the small things and not very exciting things necessary to create a structure for solving big problems. Um, I think I'm open-minded, collaborative and capable of, uh, working with other members, even members that I don't agree with on the select board to try to achieve the goals and, that we all have and the need, the needs and goals of the town. So please vote for me on May seventh or earlier, if you, if you'd like and can. And more importantly, urge your friends and neighbors to also vote for Bernard Green. And you can go to my website, bernardgreen.org to see a little bit more, more information. It's not, it's not a, a treatise. I haven't put a treatise on, on, on the website. I just have basic information, um, there. But that's very useful, uh, would be very useful for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Bernard. Susan.
Okay, thank you very much for coming out today and for sitting through all of this. And as we come to the end, I hope that, um, you will vote for me. I hope that, um, I will be that you will check next to my name come, come May seventh or earlier. You know, actions speak louder than words during COVID. Um, when I had the freedom to write articles for the Brookline tab, I wrote on articles that were important, that brought accountability. And I wrote about the seniors. There are a handful of articles I wrote because I was worried about the seniors. I was concerned that they would slip through the cracks. And, um, I, and I did follow-up articles. You can check. Um, anyway, a guiding principle for my family and me, my husband had been ma- my husband and I have been married almost three decades. We have three beautiful, strong daughters, two are out of the house, one's recently graduated. And a guiding principle for us is to take good care of what we have. And that's what I would do if I sit on the select board. I would improve the things that are broken, our roads are broken meters, things that are not working for our seniors. Um, paint this, paint the, the community center. Um, I would streamline things, streamline payments. So it's, we have easy access on the, um, website. I would streamline the permitting so small businesses can open quickly. And, you know, I would, it's all about good governance for me. Checking in on our community and seeing how everyone's doing. I want to know how everyone's doing and what's not working. We can turn that around. And we need to use our time wisely. So let's look at the details and see how we can save money. You know, when, if we're being wasteful, we need the courage to say we need to, um, you know, spend better. And I have no problem doing that, uh, managing a house for three decades. So let's do this together. I hope that you will vote for me. We can't fix the world, but we can take good care of our town and lead by example, by embracing the, the diversity here in Brookline. So thank you and have a great afternoon.
Thanks, Susan. Take care, David.
Experience matters and even though I'm forty-one years old, I do have a lot of experience. So ten years on town meeting, six years on school committee, the last two years as school committee chair. I have also been on the Town School Partnership Committee, which looks at the split between the school budget and the municipal department's budget. I have, uh, been on the Select Board Climate Action Committee. So I'm very familiar with ongoing efforts around our climate mitigation. I have been on the Land Bank Study Committee. I have, uh, negotiated very large contracts with unions. And I'm familiar with the day-to-day structures and functions of our highest levels of municipal government. I already regularly work with the town administrator and members of the select board. And so I feel it would be a seamless transition for me to step over to the select board side. I also think that my leadership style is important. I am someone who is very calm. I don't get, uh, hurt if somebody is angry at me. In fact, I actually welcome that because anger, anger, just like love, is a very intense emotion. I would be much more concerned by apathy and indifference. And fortunately, I don't encounter a lot of apathy in Brookline. And so I take that as a very good sign. Now, uh, I don't think I have enemies out there, but even if I do, I would be representing you too, and I genuinely mean that. And many people who started out perhaps as political enemies of mine when I first, uh, arrived on the townwide, uh, electoral scene are now some of my staunchest allies. And I think that speaks to my ability to bring people together, to be someone who unites rather than divides. That's something I'm very much committed to. It's also critical to be able to read a room and a moment. Uh, for example, in the aftermath of October seventh, uh, many parents were very concerned about rising antisemitism in the schools. They came for a school committee meeting for public comment and I allowed that to be interactive. That's not what we normally do, but I let it happen because that's what we needed. And so that's my leadership style and I asked for your vote on May seventh or before. And you can go to my website, electperman.com. Thank you.
So thank you, um, to all of our candidates for being here. Um, yeah. It, it takes a tremendous amount of personal courage to put yourself forward in the way that you all are doing. And so thank you very much for doing that. Um, thank you to Matt for keeping time. Thank you very much. Uh, and to Brookline Can and League Women Voters for sponsoring this forum. Hope you all have a good night.